Is now starting, all attendees are in listen only mode.
All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the planning board meeting for Tuesday, April 20th, 2021, special Tuesday edition, since Monday was a holiday here in Mass. So before we get going, obviously, this meeting will be held via webinar again. And before we get going, I have a few public server or opening statement. So housekeeping items, this meeting will be recorded by Westford Cat. We respectfully ask that everyone mute their computer mics and phones when they are not used to avoid unnecessary noise during the meeting. This is an open meeting, so for all the panelists that have access to the chat panel, I would like to remind you to not use that function to discuss any of the content of the meeting, but to ask a question or any technical issues with the video conferencing platform, and please direct them to the organizers. All votes will be done by rule call. Again, all attendees will be muted upon arrival. If an attendee wishes to contribute a question or comment, they may virtually raise their hand via the platform's control panel. And the chair or staff will recognize and unmute the participant where they can voice their concerns similar to approaching the microphone at a live meeting. Or individuals may submit questions and comments to the chair and staff by utilizing the questions function. These will be compiled and included into the hearing at the appropriate time. And due to limitations of the platform, attendees that are accessing the meeting via the telephone number at the bottom of the agenda will only be able to listen to the proceedings and will not be able to contribute. Please access the video conference via the link on the agenda, even if you don't have a webcam to participate. So participating here tonight, joining us tonight, Kate, Bob, and myself right now from the planning board. Dylan's going to be joining us a little bit later, probably about 15 minutes later. And Mike is out this evening. He's away for the week. So and then I think, you know, from staff, we have Jeff and Matt. And I believe that Paul Starrett is not joining us tonight either. Paul is is not available for this evening's meeting. So that couple of items ahead, couple of housekeeping items. So we do have a couple of public hearing items first on the agenda. The for public hearing item number two, PB 12102 for 0 and 37 Carlisle Road. The applicant has requested postponement without discussion until the first meeting in May, which is May 3rd. Just as a heads up, we'll move that when we get to it. So tonight, as we're waiting for Dylan, I'd like to start with the general business items, but before we do, I'll go to open forum to see if there's anything in open forum from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to point out the 2020 amendments to our zoning bylaw have been finalized. We have published that bylaw. We're just doing some quality control measures before we bring it to the town clerk's office to certify. And of course, each of you lucky volunteers is guaranteed one of your very own copies for all the good hard work that you do. So it should be ready for pickup sometime next week. We'll let you know when they're ready and you can pick them up at your convenience.
Excellent, thank you. Anything on open forum from the from the board?
Mr. Chair, I do have one member of the public wishes to speak as a question comment for the open forum.
Sure.
Mr. Fassbender, please state name and your address.
Paul Fassbender, 14 Texas Road. I did type in a quick question. A number of us are interested in participating in the outreach plan for the drive through town meeting topic, but haven't seen much about how we can get involved. Is there a place we can go to find out? I think, as you said, text will be up on the town site soon.
Jeff, do you have an answer to that one or Bob?
So what I can say is information that is clocked with the town clerk's office will be making available on our website at the planning board website, actually. There are some materials that were clocked in recently, on Friday. We haven't had a chance to upload them yet. We expect to be uploaded by tomorrow. And then I think.
Did I ask Mr. Fassbender to please mute? We're having a real hard time hearing you, Jeff.
Yeah. And then so we'll be getting the materials up hopefully by tomorrow onto the planning board website. And then I thought, Bob, you probably had additional information to offer about forthcoming info.
Yeah, I was gonna wait for Bruce Rosenberg to come on later. I think he has the dates. We're working to set up two information meetings in May to most likely it's going to have to be via webinar or Zoom. We probably will not be able to have them face to face in any fashion unless we get real favorable weather. And then there's also going to be the League of Women Voters Night, which is the first week of June. And I'll get those dates here in a moment. Let me look them up. So. Great, thank you. Yep. Are you gonna look those up right now, Bob? Or are you just gonna address that when we get to that?
Let me get to it later. I've got to work that.
Yep, good, all right. Anything else from the audience? Matt?
I do not see anything, Mr. Chair.
All right, so Bob, Kate, nothing, nothing from the board for open forum? Okay. All right, and that being said, we'll move on to our first item tonight, which is under general business. It's PB 2116. It's a request for endorsement of an A and R for 426 and 430 Groton Road. Really, it's a matter of just a lot line of a lot line adjustment. Jeff provided kind of a drawing, a schematic of it in our packets. Hope everybody had a chance to look at it. Jeff, I'll go to you for a preview on this one.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So as you mentioned, it really is just a lot line adjustment. There's two lots side by side. One lot is oversized, one is undersized, and they want to adjust the lot line to sort of bring the smaller lot into conforming lot size. So this would result in two conforming lots, whereas right now only one of them is conforming. So big picture from a zoning perspective, this is a win-win. And we do believe this is entitled to receive A and R endorsement by this board. So we have no objection to this application.
No, thank you. I guess I'll go, is there, there's no one here, there's no applicant here for this one, right?
Correct, there's no one here for that, or it wasn't scheduled to be anyone. Mr. Hannaford is in attendance, if you're looking to go to him, Mr. Chair.
All right, I guess only if we have questions, I guess. I will go to the board here first, so I'll go to Kate. I think I'm pretty good with it. Kate, I'll go to you.
It's pretty self-explanatory, and I want to thank the applicant for putting in the that one right there that explains what's happening. That was very useful, as well as the description. So I don't have any, no comments.
Yeah, okay, good. Bob?
No, I'm fine. I talked to Jeff earlier. I was just kind of a little confused about what was happening with the lots, but it made more sense.
Yeah.
And I did, I did a drive by today just to take a look at the two lots, so I'm good.
Yeah, good, thank you. I think the the visual there was very helpful, I think, for all of us. So that was, that was great. So yeah, I think it's, I have no, I have no issues with it, and I'm happy to approve that. We can do that with three votes, right, Jeff?
That's correct. And might I suggest, for your convenience, if you were to throw in authorized staff to sign on your behalf, you could save yourselves a trip.
All right, good.
Let me try this then. I move that we approve the PB 2116 A and R for 426 and 430 Groton Road. The approval not required plan to facilitate a lot line adjustment with the usual wordage that we make no determination with respect to zoning, meeting zoning requirements, and that we also authorize staff to sign for the planning board.
That sounds good. Is that good, Jeff?
Sounds great.
Perfect, thanks, Kate. Is there a second?
Bob, that's you.
No, second. All right, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye, Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye. You guys notice I'm going in a different order tonight? So, all right, so then, second item now is under general business, item B. It is PB 2118, another request for endorsement of an A and R plan to facilitate another lot line adjustment. This one at 63 Main Street. Jeff, I will, I will hand this over to you for a quick summary on this one as well.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. So first of all, this is an application by the town. And so we would ask that the board would waive the application fee if they're so willing to do. And then secondly, as you may recall, in keeping with direction from town meeting, there was a desire to move the sale of this property to private use, however, with the understanding that a portion of the land might be retained to facilitate a potential expansion of a parking lot to serve Town Hall proper. So that's the purpose of this plan. There was some delay, but that was to ensure that there was a approved septic design that would service the needs of the remaining property. So this is fit for endorsement, and we hope the board will waive the fee and then act accordingly.
I move, I move that we waive the filing fee.
Second. All right, motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor of waiving the filing fee, say aye, Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye. All right, any, any discussion on the A and R itself? Kate?
No, no comments.
Great, Bob?
Nope, everything's fine.
Nope, looks pretty straightforward. Kate, do you want to take a stab at the?
Sure. I move that we approve PB 2118, 63 Main Street for endorsement, quest for endorsement of an approval not required plan to facilitate a lot line adjustment with the usual language that we make no determination with respect to compliance with zoning.
Second. And we do, do we want to allow staff to endorse the plan?
Oh, yes, sorry, and that we authorize staff to sign the plan for, for the planning board.
Thank you.
Bob, is your second still in effect?
Yes, second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for the vote. All those in favor of approving the A and R, say aye, Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye.
Thank you.
Great. And that brings us to item C under general business, PB 1707 Spalding Hill Estates. A couple of items here. The first one is a request to approve a covenant pursuant to MGL Chapter 41, Section 81U. This is for Spalding Hill Estates. And this, this covenant was reviewed by council. It was amended initially, and then, you know, the copy we've seen is the amended version and approved by council. So I'll go to Jeff on this one as well.
Really, I think you're gonna put me out of a job there, Mr. Chair. It was the usual covenant. This prevents any of the individual lots that are so restricted from being conveyed or sold until such time as either the improvements are constructed or that another form of security is put in place. So that's the purpose, and it affects all but two of the proposed lots, because two of the lots front on existing frontage served by St. Augustine Drive.
All right, great.
Jeff, correct, I thought it was only one lot.
It's two.
One house lot.
So there's one at the end, and then there's the so-called farm lot that has their frontage off of St. Augustine.
Okay, got it.
Right. Yeah, thanks, thanks, I had a question on that one, too. Okay, good. All right, any, any discussion from the board? Kate?
Yeah, I did, I looked at the plans, and I know one of the big things for me during the public hearing was the trail system. And on the plans that we approved during the public hearing, they did show the trails on the plans, but I did not see them on this set of plans. So I would, I personally don't want to endorse the final plan set without the trail system on there, because that was a big part of my positive vote over.
All right, is that, is that handled separately, Jeff, under us, under B here? Or can we, can we approve the covenant without that, or is that part of that?
You can certainly approve the covenant without that. And there's no.
Yeah, the covenant. Go ahead, sorry.
There's no harm in discussing that. I mean, the covenant really just protects the potential future lot owners.
Okay.
Separate issue, but to Kate's point, I thought it was shown on a particular plan sheet, even if not well labeled. I think it was graphically shown, and there are several conditions of approval, I believe, that ensure that it's in place prior to at least the last certificate of occupancy. But we can check, I thought there was something on sheet 11 or 12.
I looked on the landscaping one, and I looked on the detailed sheets, and I didn't notice anything.
For the record, Dylan is now with us. Dylan O'Connor has joined.
Good evening, everybody, sorry, I was a little late.
Oh, welcome. We're on general business item C right now, Dylan.
Thank you.
And I was just saying that with respect to endorsing the final plan set, that I did not notice the trail system on any of the plans. So I think Jeff is looking to see if it is there.
Yeah, so Kate, on sheet 12 of 30, there is a proposed trail indicated. It also refers to seat note number nine. So if you, I don't know, Matt, I don't know if you can access that, but there is a proposed trail shown on sheet 12.
Is it the plan set last revised February 25?
Yes.
Okay. And what sheet was that?
12, please.
Oh, that's dashed line. Okay, I got it.
Yeah. I think we even told them, don't bother plotting until you know what Kate Hollister's going to be looking for.
Sorry, that was my, I just saw a dark line, and I didn't read the legend.
It's labeled at least one, but.
Yep.
All right, good, so it's there, that's good. All right, any other?
It's just not, it just isn't on the legend.
Okay, good, good pickup. Any other comments, Kate, on the covenant or the plan set?
Nope, that was it.
All right, I'll go to Bob.
My only question, I was, I was struggling reading through the language of condition 10, which started upon final completion of the construction of ways, and got tangled up around the phrase of no earlier than January 1st, 2026. And the planning board shall release the covenant. And then failure to complete construction and installation with the time specified herein. I'm making sure that that language was tight enough to indicate that that January 1st, 2026 is the same date or time specified herein. This just seemed to be very awkward. I struggled with understanding what we were doing. Was it that the covenant has to be in place until that date?
Or if. Keep in mind, the applicant, by subdivision control law, they can vary the security over time. So they're starting with a covenant, and if they so choose, they can vary that and either provide some financial or other security in place of the covenant or not. But the case is that they cannot sell these lots so long as this covenant is in place, or at least until they replace it with another form of security pursuant to subdivision control law. I guess all I can say is that this was scrutinized by council. There was some back and forth, and this wasn't randomly picked.
I did have, I didn't really understand that, but I figured town council knew what he meant. But can you explain that, what it meant, what it means? No earlier than, what, what, what can't happen any earlier than January 1, 2026?
I guess my question, Jeff, it's the way I heard you explain it, it sounded like a no later than and not a no earlier than date. And I'm just making sure that that, that's the meaning.
I'm just skimming that, hold on one second. So I think this is specifying, as of right now, as with any security, the, the board may impose and/or the applicant may spell out the anticipated timeframe that they expect all of the improvements to be completed. And so that is my understanding, is that they're proposing that this will be done no later than January 1st, 2026.
And that's why I have that, that's why I think the, there's a, maybe backwards there, because it says no earlier than.
Yeah, so maybe it should, it's a typo, it should be no later than. That would make sense.
So from a practical standpoint, I don't, I don't think this makes a difference, because the protection will be in place for the intended purpose. And obviously, if they complete this, the improvements earlier or at any point, then certainly the board can release the covenant at any time upon request or replace it with another security as desired by the applicant.
Right, but there's also the condition in here that if they do not complete the work by that date, there's an automatic rescission of our approval of the subdivision plan.
Well, they automatically have to come back to this board well before that date, because they're conditioned to come back and to provide an update in a timeframe and with their progress, and perhaps even with progress as built. So they're mandated to come back to this board, I think, every two years, once this kicks off.
Okay.
Kate?
I'm, the way, I think I'm with Bob. The, the way I read number 10, the first three lines of it, is that we cannot, the planning board cannot release the covenant until January 1, 2026 or later. That's how I read it.
Okay, and I'm not a land use attorney, but a retired land court judge approved this language, and I would argue that this board can, under subdivision control law, release a covenant if the purpose is satisfied and is consistent with subdivision control law, notwithstanding a phrase or two in a particular document. It's either we need a covenant in place before you may endorse the plans or some security, and if the construction is complete, well then, of course, you certainly can release the covenant.
Okay. I'm just wondering, since we already have to go back to have the trails added to the plans.
Well, I would guess the trails are on the plans.
They're on the plan.
Are you found them?
There's a dark dotted line on 12 and sheets 12 and 13. They just don't include it in the legend, but they do have a little arrow on the plan that says proposed trail.
Okay.
Jeff, in the interest of time, is it, is it something we could approve with the caveat that town council has final say, whether it's, you know, later or before that date? We want to make sure it's consistent with his review.
So we're happy to do that. If the board would like to vote, subject to further town council review, we're happy to do that.
Good.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
And you know what we want them to review?
Yes, I do.
Item 10, yeah. Make sure that's not a typo. Okay, anything else, Bob?
Nope, that's it.
All right, Dylan, did you have any comments or questions on the covenant or the plan?
I did not, thank you.
Okay. All right, great. All right, so we need two actions here tonight, Jeff. We need to approve the covenant. And then we need to vote to endorse the final plans with a little bit of a special situation here, right? So we want, you know, we can, we can vote to approve the plan set, but not sign it until the butter that has the easement is gonna see, you know, how sign is first.
So as you're correctly alluding to, as with the case with a large project like this that was very complicated, there, there is a little bit of chicken and egg situation going on. So what we'd ask the board to do tonight, if you're willing to vote to approve, to endorse the plans, and then we will make sure that we have, for instance, the covenant gets a second look by town council, we'll make sure we have everything in place. We won't ask you to physically come in and sign until we have all that is needed. So we're not having you sign something if it can't move forward. We're only having you sign it if things can proceed.
Okay. Great. Yeah, I had no further questions on it, on the covenant or the final plan set, especially given that town council is going to review that language in number 10. So is there any, any, any further questions? Anybody have any other questions on, on the covenant before we can make it a vote on that one? So is there a motion then to approve the covenant for Spalding Hill Estates, as discussed here this evening, and with the final review by town council, for questions on item number 10?
So move.
Second.
All right, motion, a second, any further discussion? So all those in favor of approving the covenant, say aye. Kate?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye. And then is there a, a motion to approve the final plan set for the, for Spalding Hill Estates with signatures to follow only when the administrative issues discussed here this evening are taken care of?
So move.
Second.
Second.
All right, motion. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the final plan set, say aye, Kate?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye. All right, great.
Thank you very much. And I believe Attorney Robbins is present now.
Oh, great.
Leave.
Excellent. So per our earlier comments, we'll now return back to our regularly scheduled agenda order. We'll go to public hearing item number one, PB 2037, 478 Groton Road. We have a site plan review. We also have a special permit application for a store and a, for a water resources protection overlay district and a stormwater management permit, continued from April 5th. So I'll ask, I'll go to, I'll go to staff here for any comments, then we can go to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As requested by the board, we did prepare three draft decisions for your consideration. Site plan review, special permit for work within Water Resource Protection Overlay District and the Stormwater Management Permit. So we did prepare three draft decisions that should be in the packet. There's one caveat, though, on the special permit decision, the record of proceedings, which is much more detailed for special permits as opposed to the other decisions. We are looking. We are looking to simply flush that out a little bit more. As you know, we're required to put in a record of when various documents came in from the applicant, came in from town staff. And so we believe that decision is sufficiently complete just that we would have to fill out some of the administrative portions under those record of proceedings, which do not affect conditions or findings. It's just a matter of record. So beg the board's indulgent and hopefully you're still willing to consider this and move forward subject to staff being able to flush that out.
Great.
We provide these draft decisions to the applicant. And I don't know if they're willing to comment on that.
Great. Want to go to the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Attorney Melissa Robbins on behalf of the applicant. GNM Westford LLC. We did receive all three decisions drafted by staff. We had no comments. Actually, I think Jeff was amazed. I had zero comments to any of these decisions. They looked great. We, since the last meeting, we did have a couple outstanding engineering comments that we had to address. And I, I know that Matthew Waterman from Land Tech is here as well, but we have addressed all outstanding engineering concerns. There were a couple issues that couldn't be dealt with on the plan set and engineering staff had recommended they become conditions of the decision. And I saw that Mr. Morissette and staff had already included those as part of the decision. And I think there's no other outstanding information.
I have to chime in one last time, Mr. Chair. Sorry, there were, I believe, a couple of minor administrative items raised by staff. So for instance, I, one example might be there were some proposed trees shown and graphically there might have been eight, but in the table, there might have been two. So we're looking for the final plan set to simply correct such Scrivener's errors. I can't remember what the other example was, but those were requested by staff. They are not substantive. It's simply making the plan set agree to itself. So we'd ask for your discretion to ensure that that happens in the final set that gets appended to any decisions that get recorded.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll go, we'll go to the board. I'll go to Kate.
I didn't have anything. My coordinates had to do with a record of proceedings and I understand that those will be corrected.
Right. Okay, cool. Dylan?
Oh, and I, I do want to thank engineer for whoever put together the final set of plans for correcting the legends so that they match the plans. Except for the few that are left.
Still in process.
Yep.
All right, great. All right, Dylan?
I did not have any questions or concerns. It was, you know, very clear and, and easy to understand. I didn't have any comments. So thank you.
Great. Awesome. Bob?
Nope, I'm fine. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm the same way. I saw that engineering's notes that had new, no new comments and basically their, all their comments were, have been incorporated into the conditions. So you're happy with that? And Jeff confirmed earlier that, you know, all those conditions have been incorporated into the into the decisions as well. So that is, that is good to, so I'm, I'm happy with that as well. So I guess we can go to the audience if there's any comments, Matt?
I do not see any, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. All right, so based on the board's thoughts, we can close the public hearing this evening and then vote on those decisions if everybody's amenable to that.
I'm fine with it.
Yep. Seems to be the case.
Works for me. Yep.
All right. Is there then? Go ahead, Kate.
I move that we close PB 2037 site plan review and a special permit for 478 Groton Road.
Second. All right, motion in a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye, Kate?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye.
I'll let somebody else do the important. I'll let somebody else do the important motions.
Well, how do we want to, to tackle this? So what are, you know, the record of proceedings has to be updated? Is that the la, is that the only outstanding item, Jeff, or are there other?
No, it's just in the special permit.
Yep, just in the special permit decision and it's, it's purely administrative. So if you were just, whoever the very important person is who's making the motion, if you can make reference to the draft decision and for the special permit with staff to amend the record of proceedings section, that would suffice.
All right. Well, take it away, Bob. I'm like kidding. I will move that we approve PB 2037, a special permit for 478 Groton Road. With the record of proceedings to be, I guess, updated and confirmed both by the applicant and town staff subsequent to this meeting. The town engineering staff. Is that what you want, Jeff?
Well, I think we have to.
This is more the planning staff because it's communication.
So town staff.
Or office.
Okay. So fair enough.
I, I think we want to specify it's a special permit for the water resource protection overlay district. Dylan?
Sure. Take your friendly amendment. Thank you.
Amendment, yep.
Second, the friendly amendment.
So Kate, Kate has seconded the motion with the friendly amendment. So all those in favor are, any further discussion?
For the special permit.
Right, for special permit for for the work on.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion?
Management, yep.
So all those in favor of approving the PB 2037 special permit water resource protection overlay district decision with comments made here this evening, say aye. Kate?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye.
All right, I'll move that we approve PB 2037, site plan review for 478 Groton Road.
Second.
All right, a motion in a second. All those in, I should say, any discussion?
And that's in reference to the draft decision tonight in the packet?
Yes.
Yeah. So all those in favor then of approving a site plan review for PB 2037? Say aye. So Kate?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye.
And last but certainly not least, I will move that we approve the draft decision for PB 2037 stormwater management permit for 478 Groton Road.
Second. All right, motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in.
Referring to the draft decision.
Yeah, he, he mentioned that. Yep. Yep, that was referenced. So all those in favor of approving the stormwater management permit as per the draft decision here this evening, say aye, Kate?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to our second public hearing item. PB 2102 0 and 37 Carlisle Road. And again, the applicant has requested postponement without discussion to the May 3rd, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion to postpone without discussion to the May 3rd meeting?
So moved.
Second.
May 3rd meeting starting at 7:30, probably via Zoom. Or will be via Zoom.
All right, cool. All right, there's a motion and a second on the friendly amendment. All those in favor, say aye, Kate?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye. All right, that brings us to, back to correspondence, reports and updates. I believe. So we were, is that right?
Yep.
Yes, we have a review of draft minutes from the April 5th meeting. I must say it's very prompt.
I had some, I had some corrections on it.
Well, hold on a second. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, Kate?
Yeah. Let's see. Page four, line 144. It starts on the previous page. Per Mr. Dwayne, the developed portion of the road will be discontinued in terms of being paved. The part in terms of being paved, I didn't understand that. So I didn't know if that was just a Scrivener thing. It can be, be deleted or what was actually meant there.
Where are you?
Oh.
Line 144.
Yeah.
I think wasn't the point there that it wasn't going to be paved the entire way through. It was going to, it was going to like transition to gravel or dirt or something for that further in newer, the newer section that they'll build out, right?
Right.
That's, that's what I recall from the meeting anyway.
So from cut through, so per Mr. Dwayne, the developed portion of the road will be. So what should that actually say?
I think it should probably say the paved portion of the road will, will end, and the new parts of the road that would facilitate a cut through would, would be gravel or, or, or dirt. I don't, I'm not clear what the surface is going to be, but it's clear they weren't going to, they didn't intend to pave it the whole way through was the impression that I got.
So the developed portion of the road or the paved portion will only go partway through?
I think it's actually, if memory serves me, it's, it's the, it's the piece that just, it's the, basically the entrance on Patton Road. So basically that piece that, yeah, where you access from Patton Road onto the property, that will be you know, blocked. So that, that, that can't be a straight through, throughway. But it could be worn definitely.
Might I suggest, I don't know that that is crucial. Maybe you could simply omit that one sentence. And the plans are the plans. So I don't know that it's necessary for purposes of deciding.
Okay. I'm happy, I'm happy with deleting it.
Yeah.
And then further down on that page, line 174. Just to read it better. It says town council suggested changes or deletions. And I, to make the sentence read correctly, it should see, I would change it to town council suggested changing or deleting. Changing or deleting due to redundancies. So read it would read the chains expressed concern for some of the conditions of approval, which incidentally were the same sections that town council suggested changing or deleting due to redundancies.
No, flows a little better.
Yep. And then a little further down on line 189. So Bonafant noted the erosion control plan shown stormwater system going through these lots and suggested moving stone walls to delineate the open space in the no clear zone. And it's not really open space. So I would just delete the, the phrase opens, the open space in. So it would just be that Bonafant suggested moving stone walls to delineate the no clear zone. Cause I, I want to differentiate it from actual open space.
Yeah, makes sense.
And then on page six. Line 256. This is where Bob had made some comments. And line 256 says existing 10 foot opening. I would remove 10 foot because the opening is actually wider than 10 feet.
So strike 10 foot. So it just says existing opening?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
And that's what I had.
Great. Anything else, Dylan?
No comments from my side.
Bob? Um. The only comment I had was to, maybe, maybe it's to Jeff. My, I seem to recall on line 191 after Jason asked about when to, he expect, when to expect to see the final plans. I think Jeff said it would take upwards of four weeks for those plans to be available. I'm not sure if he wanted to provide an answer to the question that was asked by Jason with the, with this minute.
So I, I can't recall precisely what I said, but you're, you're correct. I didn't envision the applicant revising the plans until after the appeal period for the decisions have lapsed. So 20 days plus, I think four weeks is a good estimate.
But, but I think something along the lines of what you just said is what you said then. And I think it would be nice to just have the answer in there to his question.
Okay. If you're willing to just give us that discretion, we'll capture that thought.
Yeah, because I, 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 I had the feeling he was thinking that, oh, I can pick this up tomorrow and you explained, no, this will take some time.
We can do that.
Yep. That's, that's everything. Cool. I had one comment. It's very easy. On line 109, it said on a nation, on a motion made Hollister, just include by in there.
Good catch for you.
Yeah, good. All right. So any other, any other comments on the, on the meds? So seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as discussed here tonight, say aye, Kate?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye.
Thank you.
All right, now we get to really an announcement, right, Jeff? So 2021 annual town meeting, we've got basically just kind of announcing that there will be a public hearing opening, what, May 3rd for the discussion points for the amendments for the, for the town meeting, correct, Jeff?
Right, so whether the planning board sponsors a zoning bylaw amendment or not, they are required to hold a public hearing on every zoning bylaw amendment that's proposed. I believe we have five currently. And May 3rd is the date that the planning board will begin their public hearing process. So that's just a public service announcement there, May 3rd. And then kind of a little more interesting and unusual is paired with that, one of the zoning bylaw amendments is to add the Merrill's quarry property into the senior residential multifamily overlay district. And so that you're required under the bylaw to hold a public hearing on the proposed plan. So I would kind of look at this as sort of a preliminary subdivision in a sense where the board can accept testimony and hear input from abutters and the public. And the real purpose is just for the board to make as informed a decision as possible when it comes time for town meeting vote. So nothing is truly binding. You don't have to really issue a decision. It's all just to help you folks prepare whatever recommendation you're going to prepare for town meeting. And then we also included the draft warrant because there may be some articles. Perhaps some of the citizen petitions, the board is not required to offer. perhaps some of the citizen petitions, the board is not required to offer an opinion or recommendation. But we figured since you're gonna be starting your public hearing process on May 3, this is just an ask to see, are there any of those articles that the board might want to consider? You know, weighing in on or offering an opinion or a recommendation one way or another. If you are, then we can simply add that information to your May 3 packet. And then I'm sure Mr. Schaffer would like to explain a little bit about drive-throughs and Kate would like to probably explain a little bit about the inclusive language and ministerial edits to the zoning bylaw as well. And I'll stop talking.
Perfect, so I'll go with, since we've been started, we'll go with Kate again, start to start on this one.
Hi, Jeff sent out a, an email, sorry, about an hour before the start of our meeting. Email over the weekend was not friendly, but, um, and this is, this is the proposed length corrections or language changes to the zoning bylaws mainly for, to make them gender neutral. And there's also a few typo corrections and such. And I had submitted them to town manager, but she wasn't comfortable just saying, well, Kate, Kate put this together. She wanted to, to hear that the rest of the board was okay with me putting forth these proposed changes to the zoning bylaws. So Jeff sent out what I sent to town manager and I, it's not binding, but I would just like a sense of the planning board, if you're okay with what I proposed for language changes.
Great, thank you. So I saw that, I, you know, I saw it looked fine to me, didn't, it didn't change the, uh, you know, the meaning of the, uh, of the statements, it was just, you know, like Kate said, kind of making them more gender neutral. So I'm happy with the changes. Bob, Dylan, you guys, have you guys had a chance to look at them?
I looked at them quickly, I'm fine.
You're on mute, but we got.
I, I looked through them quickly as well, and I'm looking at them now, and they, they look fine to me, so good job, Kate.
Okay, so Jeff, you want me to send her an email, or you wanna do it?
I'll take care of it.
You're on, you'll take care of it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great, Kate. And Bob, for a drive-through?
So first off, let me just say, before I get into the meat of this, I had talked with the economic development committee. And we had come up with a couple of dates here for doing the information meetings with the town. And originally we'd looked at the 6th and 25th, but I'm gonna have to make an executive decision here and move the 25th to the 26th because the 25th is a select board meeting night. So I think we're gonna propose that we have at least two information meetings with the general public to take in comments and, and get their opinions on the parameters within the proposed motion. And those would be May 6, which is a Thursday night, and May 26, a Wednesday evening. We did try to pick two different evenings in the week. In addition, there will be a legal woman voters annual town meeting preview where I assume we will be asked to maybe present a quick overview of the proposed bylaw with the motion at that time. And that's on Thursday, June 3. This Thursday, the 22nd of April, I will be attending the commission on disability with Bruce and his fellow members from the EDC as well. So that's what I have now. Last week I worked with Jeff and town staff, and I put together the, the draft of the first version of the motion. The purpose of this was to try to bring everything in, take in some of the concerns that were expressed in the past in terms of the parameters and, and put together a, a so-called straw man version here that would allow the public to provide critique and comment and provide a structure that was flexible enough to, to take in those, those comments. And the way I've structured it is as I set it up as a drive-through restaurant overlay district, DTROD. That provides the maximum flexibility, I think, as we go forward to town meeting and how we specify which lots, which parcels should be included in that district. And the way I've defined it right now is it's the commercial highway, all lots that have frontage on Littleton Road. And that was, I think, a, a pretty good algorithmic description of the lots we were discussing at town meeting back in the fall. And so you can see here the structure of the, the bylaw, I took some of the parameters from what we learned from how Chelmsford constrained drive-through restaurants on Route 129. Because that was, had a lot more specificity than, than what they did when they simply threw the table of use regulations provided for drive-through restaurants under a special permit. So right now, the one thing I still have to do is I have to work on signage and have to determine how to address the parameters for what signage would be permitted, provide guidance in terms of size and placement screening, and also work out how to differentiate and to address where that might also appear in our signed bylaw. So that's all I really had tonight, I think. And I also got some really good input from Dylan earlier. And so Dylan, with your permission, I would like to take what you wrote me and share that with the EDC.
Yeah, that would, that would be great.
Okay, and so.
Is that the email that he sent to everybody?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah, he was very comprehensive, that was good.
Yes, and so I think that's, um, what we're looking at right now is kind of divvying up between the different groups, how to address the different concerns. As I've said, I think I make, you know, in previous meetings, we're looking more than just, we're looking for more than just anecdotal. We're looking for some business financials and actually statistical numerical assessment of impacts that this kind of a change could have on the businesses in the affected area in terms of possibly increased foot traffic, increased visibility. And what would that do to bolster up some of the businesses which have had failing numbers the past year? So, or falling numbers, I should say, not failing. So anyways, that's where we are right now. I'll work with Jeff, with your permission, Mr. Chair, to set up the public meetings. I think we need to set up an information space on the website to start allowing for us to publish the drafts of the warrant or the motion language as we proceed forward through this information collection process.
Yeah, that sounds great.
And the other thing I think I shared with all of you was an information briefing that was put together last week and published last week by ACT and for their planning board meeting held seven days ago. And first time that we've seen any information on what they're gonna be doing with respect to their drive-up window proposal. What was interesting was there was approximately a 75% approval rating in the town. And ACT, and I think has been very similar in terms of some of the patterns of, of proposed drive-through win, window zoning changes in the past that failed at town meeting. And in some of the same years that we've, I think, proposed our changes as well. So just very interesting, and they just talked about, and I'm looking to reach out to them to find out how they're proposing to constrain it or, or address the, the character issues such as screening of signage, screenage of the openings, have, have seen some, in the research I've done in the state, have seen some proposals in which there's a negative assessment placed on any proposal that involves increasing, for example, the number of curb cuts. It doesn't prohibit them, but it's a negative assessment factor. When, when that's, and, and you basically address it through safety. Bottom line is, everything is done looking at maintaining and not decreasing safety as you add these new capabilities, features onto a restaurant. I also, if you look at the bylaw, was careful to allow for modification of an existing facility as well as construction of a new facility and to treat them in, in roughly the same manner. Right now, the proposal also is to allow only for end units or standalone restaurants to be considered. Also have conditions in there that would frown, would, would not allow for, for example, a drive-through food kiosk. There has to be onsite dining available. And I have included a provision that it has to be both internal as well as external dining options available for customers. So that's in a nutshell what's there. You, you have the bylaw, and I suggest that we can discuss this further during the hearing process in the month of May.
Great, yeah, thank you. It's a lot of prep work there.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you. So I, by the way, I did reach out to NIMCOG today to see if they have any kind of data they can provide, so they're checking into that.
Okay.
Yeah, and Bob, I, I mentioned to you, I have a call, like a retail industry call coming up on Thursday, and I'm gonna see if I can get access to any of the kinds of data that I was looking for with my first set of questions in that email. So I'll, I'll do that follow-up on my end this week.
Okay, and I think Bruce might be listening online, and to Bruce Tom and the others, I will forward that email on this evening.
Would MCOG have that kind of information, do you think?
Uh, probably only if one of the towns within, you know, the, uh, the area went through some sort of study. But, you know, I threw it out there to see, so we'll see if there's something available. Or maybe it might be another region that did something similar, and then they can just borrow that data too. So hopefully. So, all right, good. All right, so I think we're all set with the, uh, the town meeting updates. I did want to comment that we did receive a letter from our resident on Lawson Road about stormwater and issue of the, of the stormwater going into Nav Lake, so that has been addressed. I did talk to staff and Jeff, I know, has mentioned it to engineering to take a look at that as well. So just wanted to let that person know that we received their letter and, you know, we've had a discussion on it.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, any, any other comments or items from the board? I think that wraps up our official agenda.
Matt, does it look, does anyone have their hand up?
I do, yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Rosenberg has his hand up if you're looking to take comment from the previous.
If it's, uh, new, if it's new information about the drive-through, sure, brief please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. In addition to MCOG, I might suggest that we reach out to the Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce and if, at Daniel McFadden, so that, that may be worthwhile, as well as perhaps the Middlesex 3 Coalition, that covers also a regional marketing zone. Stephanie Crone, so I would offer those up as, as additional suggestions. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Is that the, so who's gonna, is that like the business community or the economic development? I, is that who's gonna reach out to them?
Uh, yeah, I don't know, Bob, on that one, what, um, that sounds like it's more of the, uh, yeah, it sounds like that would be more of the, of the, the business community on that one.
Yeah.
Chamber of Commerce.
I think we've got a number of them, I'm taking notes here, we got, you know, the Lowell Chamber of Commerce is a good one. We've got the Westford Rotary, I think they still meet. Um, we've got a Westford Business Association, I know that Bruce and his folks have already been in communication with them. So there's a number of groups that we need to, to reach out to.
Yeah, there's at least three Chamber of Commerce's, there's the Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce, I think there's the West Middlesex, and then I think there's in the Shoba Valley Chamber of Commerce.
Great.
All right, I'll reach out to you after, later, probably tomorrow, Bruce, and talk about that.
Thank you.
All right, great. So if no one has any new, new questions or comments, or, and nothing, nothing else from the audience, right Matt?
Um, Mr., we just received a question from Mr. Bass Bender. He said, what about Westford residents, ACT and did a survey?
I don't know, Bob, you wanna, any, any, any thoughts on doing a survey?
It's, we can, we could, we can try to do a survey, I'll work with Jeff, see what we can put out on the website. And we can, we'll have to collect that data in the next, what, five weeks, six, six weeks? Yes, and then the other thing I was just gonna share was Jeff and I and others attended the, uh, the economic development committee meeting last Thursday morning, I believe it was. And we had a presentation there from the, the leasing agent manager for Western Valley Marketplace. And they did provide some of the statistics for what they have in terms of vacancies, which are not insignificant, but not significant either. So they obviously have concerns about trying to increase the occupancy rate there. And I think we've seen that all up and down 110, that occupancy rates are, are, have dropped in the past year or so. And there are a number of locations available for different businesses, so not just restaurants.
Right, okay. Good. All right, with nothing, nothing else new, I would, I would entertain a motion to adjourn then.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second?
Second, I was on mute.
All right, all those in favor, say aye, Kate?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye. All right, good night all.
All right, everybody.
Good night.